Calling our meeting to order here. Public audience, I don't believe we have any. There was nothing, no one's here and nothing was submitted. So, we'll move on to Board and Administrative Communications. And Catherine, we're gonna hit you up right out of the gate.
Okay, so all schools are continuing to follow COVID protocols and procedures and have really settled into this school year. Specifically at Squadron Line, they had their first virtual Shine Assembly. The theme was "You Are My Superhero." And students have fun learning about how there's a superhero in each of us and identifying how they could change the world. Tooten Hills had a successful virtual Halloween bingo. Students in grades five and six are participating in student council elections. On November 11th, they plan on having their annual Veterans Day assembly. And lastly, on November 13th, they plan on celebrating World Kindness Day. At Simsbury High School, we've completed four successful runs of the PSAT and SAT, and nine SHS students earned the distinction of being named a National Merit Commended Student. So these students scored in the top 2% of the country.
That's great.
Smart.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
That's great. All right, thank you for that. Mrs. Willerup?
I guess I would love to take this moment to talk about a public service announcement because we, every year, the Saturday after Thanksgiving, we do Simsbury Celebrates, which is to bring the town together. This year, because of COVID, we have not, we are not doing it in person, but we are still doing an event. So we will have Simsbury Community Television, which is so great to do our show, our movie, our meetings, is going to be televising a show with talent from local talent and kids. And Santa might maybe come in, send a message. And I think we've got some singing groups that are in Simsbury. Theater Guild is doing a piece, so that's exciting. We are, the farming, the fire department is going to do a standing parade where, on Iron Horse Boulevard from four to seven, five to seven, five to seven, they will be standing along Iron Horse Boulevard and we will, there will be a route for people to drive by with their families if they'd like. And in conjunction with the 350th Celebration of Our Town and the 350th Committee and Big Y who's helped sponsor us, there'll be a fireworks spectacular. And in order for that to have been put in place without public, people coming and walking on, we are doing it at a central location where people can park at the high school, the junior high, or Simsbury Farms, and they'll, should be able to see it from the center of town.
Oh, neat.
So there's exciting stuff. We are still working on setting up the website, so stay tuned. But please look at our website, Simsbury Celebrates, and look on Facebook, join us on Facebook because we'll be putting up points of interest along the way. So I just want to get it out there because it's just been such a weird year and I just want families to know that we are still trying to bring holiday cheer and the season to life with Simsbury Celebrates.
No gingerbread houses this year?
Okay, so there are gingerbread houses and we are still.
That's really important.
Thank you very much. So we are still, so go to, if you'd like to make a gingerbread house, we'd still have open applications. Go to the Simsbury Parks and Rec website and sign up. We'd love to have you. We will be doing, we won't be doing the tours of the gingerbread houses, but the families who participate will, there'll be a, there'll be a judging, still a judging, and we'll award prizes on the 22nd of November.
Great.
So if anyone wants to do that, thanks for the tip. So that's another thing we'd love to have everyone participate in. And that too will be videotaped and on Simsbury Community Television.
Oh, good.
That will run the day, the 28th and hopefully on.
Terrific. They're always so impressive.
I thank you very much for letting me take your time on that, but it's exciting.
Thanks for letting everyone know. It's something we all look forward to. Mr. Tyndall?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Jen?
I just wanted to say, I, I know that my, my own children attend Terriffill School, but I think all the elementary schools are doing that community, whatever their, whatever their good character awards are, I think that they're doing it all online. And I just have to say that like, the schools and the principals and stuff that are doing that, it really lets the kids still see each other, get their awards and do stuff. And it's a really, I mean, in this crazy world, I just wanted to give a shout out to all the elementary schools to like, letting the kids feel some sort of normalcy in this sort of crazy year.
That's great.
And I'm assuming we're still doing Veterans Day events tomorrow for, in each of the, in each of the schools because it is Veterans Day and we should always make sure we remember that.
And just thank you to all the families and the community that have supplied pictures and opportunities to the schools, and it will all take place tomorrow.
Great.
Okay. Mrs. Barry?
Okay, well.
Do you want to answer that?
Veterans Day was, there are planned opportunities and, you know, as I said, it's wonderful when people, you know, certainly supply schools with, you know, pictures and statements and comments regarding their veterans within their family or within the community. So it's wonderful. And I think tomorrow, I know principals are going to share them on their website, so everybody will get a chance to be, to see what's, what's happening as well. The other item I have, I had this great conversation today regarding the SHS Spring Musical and, you know, very different way in which to go about doing it. Dr. Stuart Younts is overseeing this and it began in the summertime. And what we have, our students, it's going to be virtual. There's no title or name yet for what it will be called, but students have been writing the, the play since the summertime and auditions will begin coming up shortly. It's really been a wonderful way to bring a variety of diversity and equity and vision of the graduate competencies. I couldn't, when I heard about it today, the way they talked about it, the creativity, the collaboration, the innovation, the self-directedness of kids that are engaged in this, I couldn't help but think of the Capstone Project.
Oh, great.
That's great.
Very cool.
What a wonderful way. So this is, you know, really, it's going to take place a little bit later in the spring than what it usually does, and it will be all virtual. So more to come on that. And the middle school is starting their plans. They haven't named it or really, we have a sense of what it will look like, an old-fashioned radio show, talk show maybe, but, but that is in progress. So more to come on that as the spring comes.
It's great to see that the creativity that you have to come up with, with COVID is really being so much more engaging of all our students.
Yes.
So I appreciate that. That's great.
And the theme that they're using is the teenager experience during COVID.
That's great. That's great. Very cool. Mr. Sullivan?
Yeah, I can just let the board know that our annual process where we take the October 1 enrollment numbers and send them off to Malone and McBroom for projections, we just received the new projections on Friday afternoon. So still analyzing that and putting it together. And I'll be able to bring a full report to you at your next meeting about the projections.
Great, thank you. Mrs. Lumke?
So two quick things. There's a group that's partnering with the 350th for All Ages and sponsored by the Simsbury Spirit Councils. They are doing a symbol of unity with Luminarias on December 6th. So if you're interested in that, you can also link up to that page. But just bringing Simsbury together in unity through light. Again, sponsored by the Simsbury Spirit Council. And also our equity work continues to progress here in the district. So over the course of our last Professional Development Day, many principals shared the equity statement and shared that it was a tremendous conversation among faculty members about what that foundational document means. So again, thank you for your look at that document and approval of that. And then the second thing relative to equity is that our administrative team is reading this book, Unconscious Bias in Schools: A Developmental Approach to Exploring Race and Racism. So we've denoted very specific days to delve into this text and talk about implications for our practices as leaders, leaders of teachers and leaders of students. So that's very exciting. And our next Equity Council meeting is actually this Thursday and the following Thursday. We are going to do some back-to-back equity meetings to look at some data and to determine our next steps as an advisory group to Superintendent Curtis and to all of you. So more on that as that work progresses.
Thank you. It's good to hear you guys are really in the thick of it right now. Amy? Okay. Mr. Curtis?
All right, yes. I wanted to go through the data slide that we've been putting up at each of the board meetings. All right, so first thing I want to denote is that the slide looks a little bit different. So I think that it's an important distinction. The state of Connecticut and Department of Public Health are the group that worked together on this template. So you'll remember the other template was very delineated in terms of columns as to number of cases and how that would drive decision-making. So what this chart reflects really and what the spirit of it is, is more flexibility at the local, kind of for us, the Farmington Valley District level and even the Simsbury level as we make decisions appropriate to what we're seeing with virus activity locally here, not just by county, not just by state. So that's the spirit of the shift in the, in kind of how the metrics are looked at. It coincides with the governor's chart. I'm sure you've all seen the state map that color codes each town in terms of where they are, either yellow, orange, or red. So Simsbury continues from a local standpoint to be in the, be in the yellow, and I'll get to that momentarily. But just to go over the metrics and kind of remind us of what they mean, we've seen an increase, certainly an uptick of cases, and we've heard about that, certainly in the media and in the newspapers at the state of Connecticut. Hartford County, both over that 10 cases per 100,000 threshold. Farmington Valley is at 8.2 cases. And this is for the, the week ending last, you know, there's lag in the data. I was on a call today in the update, the update here, there's still a day or two to go in terms of positive cases that are closing out. But we're about like 8.4 right now in Farmington Valley. So the area comparably is doing well, but has increased from, you know, mid-sixes to seven to now, now eight. So we continue to monitor that closely. We have multiple conversations, myself, Sue and Neil, with the Farmington Valley Health Group every week, whether it's contact tracing or meeting with the superintendents. There's been quite a bit of conversation, like I watched the news before I came into the meeting today, on some school districts making decisions on short-term and even a little bit longer-term closures around the holidays. Very interesting timing. A letter just came out from the Department of Public Health and the Commissioner of Education saying that they really do not support that at this point, that we need to continue to make conversations relative to where we are with the data. Let the metrics drive the decision and that kind of predicting what's going to happen around the bend is in the strategy they support in lieu of how important it is to have our kids in school. So our local health district very strongly stands behind where we are right now in our current models, meaning K-6 has been in full-time. Seven-Eight is in four days a week with the One Distance Learning Day. And the high school remains a little bit more complex, you know, due to size and scope and the cohorting at the hybrid model. So we'll be looking to continue that, you know, into next week and we will report out on the data as it changes. I'll get it to the board every, every Friday, but.
One of the questions at the, I happened to catch some of the Board of Selectment meeting last night. They were asking if that 10 number was a hard stop for the school district and what our wiggle room is around that. So I thought maybe you could address that a little bit.
Absolutely. Good question. So not a hard stop at all, right? And what, what they're recommending is when you hit that 10 mark, you really take a look at what your mitigation strategies are in school. You bring your team together, you reassess. Are they being effective? The one kind of major factor that's not measured on these charts that the state puts out, but the Department of Public Health continues to talk about, is is there community spread student to student in the school after you conduct your contact tracing? So Neil and Sue, who support and conduct a lot of our contact tracing with Farmington Valley, we have not seen that locally in Simsbury. They have not seen that in Farmington Valley. And the state reports that they have not seen that in the state. And that's really a factor that we need to take into account as we make decisions driving forward. And that is in light of the fact that, yes, we're seeing community increases and overall in the community, but what we're seeing is families.
Yep.
Things related to activities, the virus coming into the school. But when we cohort kids and we quarantine kids, we're not seeing that spread within classrooms. So we'll continue to monitor that and that's something that could potentially change a course if we see a cluster or we see, we see issues there.
Great. Thank you for that.
All right.
All right.
Thank you.
So now, we're moving on to recommended actions. So, appointment of Director of Instructional Technology.
All right. She's got to walk in around the corner.
I feel like we should play music or something.
All right. Welcome, Maggie Seidel. So I'm very excited. Neil, Neil obviously normally works us through the personnel, but I get to do, I get to do the, the good ones. So I'm lucky.
He wants us to do enrollment numbers. He likes that.
Very excited tonight to present to the board. Maggie Seidel is our next Director of Instructional Technology, K-12 for the school district. And obviously, the board is aware with John C. Latwinik's retirement, how important this position was to fill with really a visionary leader. We know that this position and the role of technology in our school system has blossomed over time. Nothing more important right now than, than getting teachers comfortable and students comfortable with the tools that are available to them to improve instruction. So Maggie has been with us in Simsbury for seven years. I can still remember sitting in Maggie's interview when she was going for that assistant principal job at Squadron Line. I wasn't in the first interview and my team told me, "You gotta come check this kid out." And she just blew us away then, and it's been wonderful to see her grow and blossom as a leader. Maggie has an interest not only in technology, but in kind of expanding her scope, K-12, and experiencing the secondary level a little bit, and this job will offer her that. So we are thrilled to bring her on board. I think she's going to do an awesome job. Maggie, I'm excited to work with you in a different capacity. Want to thank you for your time at Tooten Hills. You've done a wonderful job leading that school and always kids first. And I know you'll bring that vision into your new role in technology here, which is what we're really excited about, so.
That's wonderful.
I ask the board to consider that, that motion.
All right. So can I get a motion, please?
Move that the Board of Education appoint Margaret Seidel to the position of Director of Instructional Technology with an effective date of November 30th, 2020.
And a second?
Second.
Sure.
All right. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Welcome to the.
Congratulations.
New position. We're excited for you.
Thank you. I'm very excited to, you know, to take what John C. has done the last couple of years in the technology department and to really be able to work and enhance that. Obviously, very next to motion tonight as I leave behind the amazing work of Tooten Hills. I just want to thank all of them. And I'm not really leaving them behind, right? I mean, to hopefully continue that work with them in a different way. So I'm very excited, but wanted to just acknowledge the amazing group of people that both Squadron Line and Tooten Hills have, have given me.
Thank you.
Thank you, Maggie. Couple, couple points just to make. I know that Neil and Maggie held a faculty meeting with her staff today just to let him, let them know that this was up for consideration at the board. Maggie has a communication that will go out this evening to her parent community. And we have a communication that will go out to the entire district tomorrow to announce this because it is a K-12 position. And we are working currently, and Neil is, is driving that work to get some interim support and help Maggie as she kind of balances two worlds for a while while we run the Tooten Hill process, which will be a, a full, full process, so.
That's great. Well, congratulations. I know they'll be sorry to not have you there every day, but we're excited to have you in the district every day.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
New need for, or changing in technology. It's great to have someone with your enthusiasm taking over and taking it to the next level.
Thank you. I appreciate all of your support.
Great. Thank you, Maggie.
Thank you, Maggie.
All right. Now, approval of minutes of the October 27th Executive Session.
I'll move to approve those minutes.
A second, please?
One second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Steve?
Extension? Okay. Motion carries. Approval of minutes from October 27th, regular meeting.
I'll move to approve those also.
Anybody want to second that one?
Oh, please. You got a good, you guys got a good thing going.
All right. So all those in favor? Another extension over there. Okay. Moving on to personnel.
All right. So I'm somewhat excited about this one. I'm excited for, for Erin. But I have the great kind of privilege tonight to bring this before the board, this motion before the board that Erin Murray, our very gifted Assistant Superintendent of Teaching and Learning, is formally, we've, we've known internally that this was coming, but we're formally announcing her retirement for the board to consider this evening. Erin's going to be with us through December. She was willing to do that and hang on with us the first few months of the school year. And I will try not to get choked up with this, but Erin is an incredibly special person and just, you know, to, to say it, like we were saying before, Jen, to say it like it is. She, she's a legend in, in, in teaching and learning in the state of Connecticut. She's been our Assistant Superintendent for over 14 years. Been in the Simsbury family for 16 and a half years. Prior to taking over the teaching and learning, she was a great principal. And that's when I met her over at, at Henry James School. And has done wonderful things in this district, not only for students, not only for staff, but she has mentored our young administrators as they have come through this district in the last 14 years in ways I can't even explain. With her patience, her support, her drive, the way she motivates people, has done incredible work, is the stalwart behind our continuous improvement model here in Simsbury, and, and that, that impact won't go away. That, that impact will be here for a very long time for people to transition in and use the, use the tools that you've created to move us, move us forward. So the great thing about what Erin does is she loves her work. Erin has had options to do whatever she has wanted to do in the field of education. And I've always said as a superintendent, I am so incredibly fortunate because I work with a team of superintendents. And Erin is one of those people. But she loves the teaching and learning work. It's where it's been at for her and she's excelled at it. As I said, she's mentored other assistant superintendents as, as they've come through the ranks and has had an incredibly successful career with that. So I want to thank you for your guidance and your professional wisdom over the years, Erin. I have benefited from it in tremendous ways. And I want to, because I'm talking too much tonight, but I want to end it with this, Erin. You know, it's well-known that you came back from a significant illness. And for us to watch you over the past two years battle to come back to that, to get on top of your game, so now you could call the shots and leave when the time was right is remarkable. It's inspiring. And I know we've all benefited from that. And I'm just pleased you're going to be here for the next two months as we're still in these uncertain times and look to you to make decisions and for your guidance. But on behalf of our administration and our team, Erin, we cannot thank you enough. And we've, we've enjoyed our time thoroughly. And you have a wonderful opportunity that I know you'll speak about in a minute. But thank you. And I do ask the board to consider that motion, even though you don't want to jump on that one. I've tried all the tricks already, so I don't think that's going to work. But I, Susan, I turn that over, over to you.
So before I ask for the motion, I'm just going to say my little piece here for a second, which is, I would not be sitting here if I had not gone to the PTC meeting with you and Patty Lou Peters. And I would never have thought that I should take on this challenge. And I think of you too often. And I have so appreciated all the hard work you put in for this district. And you will be very missed.
Thank you.
So, anybody want to make that motion?
That's why I jumped at the minute.
Well played.
Jeff, it's your turn.
I, I, I will, but I just want to say, you know, Matt, you said she's, Erin's been a great mentor to assistant principals around the state and, and, and staff members around the state. Erin, you've been a mentor to everyone in this room. And I, I just want to say thank you for all your knowledge and energy that you brought to this job each and every day. If you're not excited about education after talking to Erin, then I, then, then something is very, very wrong. So I just want to thank you for everything. I, you know, as good as you've been in this job, I, I consider it more valuable, more meaningful to me to consider you a friend. And that's, means the world to me and I'll miss seeing you each and every day here.
Thank you.
And with that, I will regretfully make a motion. Oh, wait, do we have to do both of them together?
Do them separate.
So I'd like to move that the Board of Education accept the retirement of Erin Murray effective December 31st, 2020.
Yeah.
Anybody want to second that?
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Erin, thank you so much. You, everything that they've said, you've done, but you do it with a grace that is undeniable.
Thank you.
I mean, I, I, as a newer member of the board, I'm totally a high-strung person and you are always the most. You're like, whatever, Jennifer. It's amazing and I will miss that.
Thank you.
Can we have your number if we need you?
Yes.
You're going to have like five new Facebook friends today?
The depth of knowledge that you share with us and with the whole district certainly helps us understand the things that we don't come in with the knowledge. And that's been immeasurable for me. And thank you. Miss you very much.
And you share your information without bias. So you just give us facts and help us to learn what, how to use them and figure out what's best for our district. And that's also part of your grace. Thank you.
Yes. Yes.
Well, thank you. Thank you, Matt. Thank you, everyone. It's so hard to believe that this time has come. You know, it's time to step into, you know, this new phase of my career. And I think the last two years has, you know, shed light on, life is good and life can be short. And I have opportunities and I'll talk about that in a minute. But when I arrived in Simsbury in 2004 as the middle school principal, I was so impressed. I was impressed with the school staff, with the community, with the parents and with the students that we got to work with every day at the middle school. We had, we had stellar academic performance for three years as, when I was principal there. And in 2007, the middle school was awarded the Blue Ribbon School for their academic performance. I couldn't have been prouder. It was such an outstanding learning experience that our students had and that our faculty had. And then I remember in 2005, I came to a board, board meeting as the principal and presented a renovation project for Henry James. Remember, that was 2005, and I recommended that there would be a media center and that the main office would get moved to the front of the building. And I was hopeful that an auditorium would be added to the project in which to really round out the educational experience for our middle school students. And now 15 years later, it's been accomplished. Well done.
You're going to put a bow on it and that's your retirement present.
But since I entered this position as Assistant Superintendent of Teaching and Learning, I can't begin to tell you how proud I am of the commitment that our administrators and that our educators have made around curriculum design, instructional strategies, academic practices that they've used with our students. It's just so creative and innovative. And again, it's just been outstanding work over the last 15, 17, 16 and a half years that I've been here. And I know that it will continue to move in such a positive way as we go forward. In addition, I can remember back in 2007, '08, we instituted professional learning communities. And it was an opportunity where educators could come together and collaborate and talk about their curriculum, their instruction, their assessments, their practices in the classroom. And boy, has it taken hold. There isn't anything more powerful than the opportunity for teachers, educators to collaborate around their work and to be able to talk about the success that they see students having or the struggles that they see students having at the same time. We know it can't be done alone. We know it has to be done in collaboration. And we have all grown so professionally throughout this time. I want to thank you, the board members, past and present. I can't begin to talk about the ongoing support that you've given me. You've provided me such great insight and guidance to continue to, to do the work I love to do. And it's just been so wonderful. I also want to thank my mentors, I have to say, Diane Ullman, who I worked with for a long time in a previous district. And she and I came to this district the same year. Other colleagues, my friends here in Simsbury for their strong belief that I was the right person in a leadership position that could make a difference in the lives of our students and in the, and help educators. make a difference in the lives of our students and help educators grow. I just really can't thank everyone. Finally, I'm just not sure how to leave this dynamic central office team. This is, this team of Matt and Neil and Sue, I don't have the words to express the excitement and the joy that I bring every day so that I can work closely with them. You guys are the best and thank you. So I do look forward to entering the new phase of my career. I'll be expanding my role at UConn in the Administrators Preparation Program. I'll be overseeing the instructional aspect of aspiring principals and working with them. And I will stay fully connected to Simsbury. I know who the people are and how I will get them into, and have them be part of my life continuing down the road. So thank you to the Simsbury Public Schools for a wonderful 17, 16.5 years in public education. It has been outstanding. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so we do have a second personal item.
Did they vote on that?
No.
We voted on Erin.
We voted on Erin.
We did.
We did vote on Erin.
Yes. Okay.
We did. Unfortunately.
Yes, I do. So mine is pretty good, too. So I will, because I've had the opportunity to work with Susan Giswoldy for the past 20 years. And Susan is also taking her retirement in the next little bit of time here. Susan is a social studies teacher at Simsbury High School. She's been there for over 30 years, plus several years in Granby before that. So this is a 40-year career that we're marking that ends in the next month or so. Susan, during my time at Simsbury High School, was mostly a teacher of the incoming freshman social studies class, World Civ I. And when you got to Susan Giswoldy's World Civ I class, you knew you were in high school. The rigor was there. It was serious business. And she was going to make sure that students were prepared for the rest of what was going to come in high school. And that's going to be Susan's legacy, that she represented that transition from middle school to high school and just got kids ready in a really profound way. She also taught a senior year law elective that she loved. And that was a course that she put a lot of passion into. She's also, back in the day, taught AP Euro and other electives in the department. But to me, again, it's that freshman legacy. So Susan was going to retire at the end of this year. You had already voted on that. But she has now decided to take her retirement at the semester break. So I don't know if it's symbolism that a social studies teacher has her retirement on inauguration day. You will see that it's January 20th. I'm sure Susan has noted that. So I ask you to entertain the motion for Susan's retirement.
Can I get a motion, please?
I'll make a motion that we accept Susan Giswoldy's retirement after a very long and very, we are very thankful for her long and rigorous career at Simsbury. And we wish her well in her retirement and hope she can have some fun.
Can I get a second, please?
I'll second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Jen?
Oh.
Jen.
Jen. Yep. And all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And thank you very much for so many years of service. Okay. Cancellation of the November 24th, 2020 meeting. So we have the tri-board meeting on the Monday following. So we are going to recommend canceling the November 24th meeting. And I'd like to get a motion on that, if I may.
I'll move to cancel the Board of Education meeting scheduled on November 24th, 2020.
Second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Any opposed? Motion carries. See you all on Monday, the 30th, for the tri-board meeting via Zoom. Watch your email for an invitation.
You got it.
All right. Onto information and reports. Capital Improvement Plan.
Yes. So we have to, Jason, there he is, just like that. He arrives.
He must have been listening.
So I will, I'll tee this up a little bit because the way we're initiating this process is a bit of a change in the past. Jason is going to talk us through year one of that capital plan. As you remember, we present the six-year spread and kind of work through it conversationally. But what we vote on at the end of the day is the year one projects. So he's put them in some categories and he's done a nice job in rolling forward some of the projects that were there in prior years, but also has integrated some of the information from the new Tecton study in terms of the maintenance projects. What you will not see on year one is that kind of first best choice we made relative to our Tecton facility study, which was the decision of either a rebuild or a renovation at Latimer coupled with Henry James. That's a topic that we're going to discuss further at the three board meeting. All right. I'm very much in favor, just so you know where I am, of moving forward the project, even if it potentially means a separation of the two projects with a priority on Latimer Lane. But we'll have time to talk through that. And if that is supported and we move forward with that in year one, we will move out some of the projects that Jason has on there today because there's some Latimer smaller things there. But what we're trying to show and denote here is that we define this long-term plan out of need. There are also maintenance needs. We recognize we can't do both. So we're going to have to make decisions along the way because we don't want redundancy there. And as you'll see, some of the things we put up for discussion tonight, our buildings, as we know at the elementary level, are not in good condition. So this is a conversation that we spent a significant amount of time on last school year. And it will remain a big part of the budget conversation this year. Obviously, we're in a different place with the COVID situation that we're dealing with. But I think we need to, and the Board of Finance certainly supports, bring in the topic forward for discussion. So I just wanted to kind of lay that out before Jason gets going.
Terrific. Thank you.
Thank you. So the three areas that we're going to be looking at within the capital projects is the district's security improvements. Back again is the SHS bleachers and some school improvements that were recommended by the Tecton study. And we'll dig into each of these areas. As Matt mentioned, this is the first year of the six-year capital improvement plan that we're focusing in on tonight. On this slide, some items on the left are the types of things that show up in later parts of the plan as we move forward. So the first item is security improvements. Back in the fiscal year 20 plan, there was a decision made to improve areas such as main entrance vestibules to improve the flow of people in and out of the buildings. Also, improvements to alarm systems, film to improve the glass. So that is an ongoing project as it was intended in fiscal 20. The plan specified moving forward with it in fiscal 22, 24. So that's simply a continuation. At this point, the Tooten Hills vestibule would be one of the next things up that we'd be looking at in this, for these dollars. The next is the SHS bleachers. We did recommend replacing these last year. However, the funding was not made available. The bleachers have not gotten younger since. They were still created in 1968. The capacity also still no longer reflects the size of the student body. For large games, these bleachers do get packed with students. The frame and structure is higher than typical bleachers. The blockhouse is still leaking underneath them. So the one thing we're doing a bit differently this year as we move this forward in the process, we've commissioned an architectural report that's going to provide more detail on what makes up that $850,000 price tag, as well as showing a comparison between replacing the bleachers outright versus trying to do some kind of upkeep, maintenance, repair work on them. So hopefully, that's going to move through this year.
So if I'm reading this right, to make our existing 1960 bleachers compliant, it would cost us $400,000?
It involves an elevator. It involves changing the ramp steepness. Yeah. The laws have changed and that's where we now stand. Yes.
Okay.
Can I also ask, I'm not sure who I'm really asking, but, you know, we've kicked this can down the road a couple of years. Is there a safety issue at all now?
When we had them recertified a few years ago, there were significant safety concerns and we did do major repairs. At this point, in the last certification process, the recommendation was replacement.
How often is that certification process done?
They do review them each year.
Each year?
Every summer, yeah.
Okay. So have we, has the recommendation been for multiple years that we replace them?
It has.
Okay. I think that's good to know. And I think it's important, and I said this last year when we were discussing it, that this is not just about the high school community. It is, the community uses the field. So I just think it's important for people to understand this isn't about your average football or soccer game. This is youth football. This is multiple uses of that field for a variety of things.
Yeah. Good point. Youth programs as well as high school programs.
Yeah.
So the next items we'll get into come from the Tecton study. And they've identified immediate needs. And then they break out the needs within the next one to three years and then four to six and so on and so forth. But this focuses in on projects that meet the criteria for capital improvement funding. So anything that was 250,000 or higher that they've flagged as being an immediate need. Obviously, one way to address this type of need is through a renovation project. Short of that, dealing with them on an individual basis, which what the next slides go through. So as you'll see, the slides, the schools we're talking about are Tooten Hills Squadron and Latimer. It's primarily windows and doors. So at Tooten, we're looking at a window and door project. Squadron, the same. And at Latimer, a window project as well as adding a never-before-existing fire protection system there was the existing needs. But we'll talk through each of these items. So at Tooten, school was originally built in 1953. The replacements are estimated, along with adding in the glazing necessary to protect against penetration through the window, similar to the projects done before. And then factoring in that buildings of this age do come with asbestos and lead and those types of things. So these numbers will be tightened up as if we choose to move forward. But these are the estimates by both Tecton and then additional estimates for the abatement piece of that. At Tooten specifically, it's the windows more than the doors that are drawing the most attention, where we do get complaints of classrooms being cold. These are not very energy-efficient windows. Some slides, I'm not sure if it really does it justice here, but we zoom in on that. It's significantly old.
One nice thing, and Jason and I have worked through this tool that Tecton has created, is the categories, right? So we have categories now that we can look at and prioritize in multiple different areas. And that's what we need to work on in the out years a little more specifically. But, you know, your roofing projects now will be prioritized in various years. And just a wonderful tool that they gave us. But you can see, you know, we don't have to go back to the slide, but the initial slide where he talked about Latimer windows, it's a little bit of an example like Erin gave in the Henry James project. The Latimer windows had been on the six-year capital plan years ago. And then we talked about a renovation at Latimer. Both those came off the six-year because we had other priorities. I mean, I understand why. But we're kind of at that critical point now where we need to come up with a plan to move forward. And the Board of Finance needs to get comfortable with what that dollar value to split between the town and the schools because they certainly have needs are as well. But we're much better poised to communicate what those needs are now than they were in the past, which is good.
Really helpful.
At Squadron Line, it's more the doors than the windows. Squadron was built in 1970. And there's a lot of work done every year in terms of realigning the doors. And you can see the gaps underneath. And even, that's a, on the left side, that's a gap between the door and the frame, that vertical gap there. And then lastly, Latimer Lane, if for some reason we're not looking at a renovation of this school, this is the immediate need that Tecton has recommended. So replacing the exterior windows there, which are quite bad, same kind of project. And then additionally, they strongly recommend having a fire protection system in place. But obviously, this would be a capital improvement that would not have to take place if we were renovating and the dollars were coming from the renovation. So Latimer, same kind of windows beyond their life expectancy. So that is the proposal for the beginning of our capital improvement plan. Comments? Questions?
Anybody have questions?
I would just add, we thought it was timely to show the year one snapshot, knowing our next meeting will be with the Board of Finance in conversation on the larger capital project. I know they've been doing some modeling. We can have that conversation, then come back. And I think we can build for you and present to you at subsequent meetings what that entire spread of the multi-year will look like. And then really have some time to talk through it at our workshop, would be my thought.
So potentially, the 2.7 could be reduced by a million and change if we pulled Latimer out of it, if Latimer were to get on the schedule?
It could. And I think if Latimer couldn't, it would be, try to get a better understanding of when it could and what kind of, right? It gets complicated. What kind of dollars you want to invest in short term when you know there's a long-term issue. And I don't think anybody disputes that there are challenges at Latimer. I mean, I think that came out strong in terms of the priority for capacity for the building and condition. So it's just a matter of time and place and borrowing rates and all those things and what that looks like, right, Amy, in terms of modeling and the comfort level of the Board of Finance and our conversations. So I think, you know, we made great progress last year and we need to continue to try to move that ball down the field this year and see where we're at. Thank you, Jason.
All right. Thank you, Jason. Good first look.
Yeah, jumping off board, for sure. Jumping off.
Okay. So budget calendar.
That's me. All right. So kind of just quickly wanted to go through the timeline of the budget. It's pretty similar to what we've done in the past with one kind of significant change. So we've talked about that November 30th timeline, how important that meeting is for us. That's a meeting normally where we receive, we have some good dialogue, we receive some guidance from the Board of Finance. And that kind of frames our process moving forward. I'll plan to come back at the December 8th meeting, take some of those major drivers that are discussed at the Board of Finance and just kind of package that differently and talk through what those main drivers are and what that rollover looks like, you know, kind of that starting point for our planning is always an important conversation and something to get an understanding on. January 12th, we'll have some time to talk about capital improvement. Also at that meeting, not really a budget item, but Sue will do her annual program review for special education. And then the big kind of presentation, as we know, about 80% of our budget is staffing and associated benefits. Neil will present to us on the 26th, what those staffing requests are, what that rollover looks like, how enrollment is impacting that. And that's usually a really good conversation that, coming out of that meeting, we have a ballpark on what the budget development process will look like. And then we're going to have a workshop. We're going to do it on a Saturday. Allow us a little bit more time. Don't want to make you nervous. It won't necessarily go from nine to three. But we blocked off that time and we'll make sure ahead of time, we have the budget booklet. We have everything we need to give people the appropriate amount of time to dig into and ask questions as we work through those various kind of line items and where we are. And then I would come back and present the superintendent's budget on February 20. And then I would come back and present the superintendent's budget on February 9. All right? And then the final adoption of that budget would be February 23. So really, the workshop component, putting more into that workshop component rather than breaking it up and doing a little piece at each meeting, we thought would be important and probably a little more productive.
The workshop was really good last year.
Yeah.
Thank you, Matt.
You're welcome.
We have COVID expenditures.
Can I just back up on a second? It's really a question for you, probably, anyways, just any, feel like giving us a little preview of the tri-board meeting at all? How are they feeling? I mean, you know, are they wanting these projects? Obviously, I'm going with the master plan and Latimer and Henry James. Do they want them split? How are they, are they more comfortable with this entire concept, or kind of where are they at?
They're actually kind of just in the beginning stages themselves, so we actually have a call on Thursday to start planning for the discussion prior to tri-board, and then this is on our Tuesday meeting, we're going to discuss how tri-board's going to go. I think they're anticipating that we're going to have more COVID impact going forward, so they're interested to see what that's going to do with the budget. They're also interested to see, since you all had your facilities master plan, the town had their facilities master plan as well, that's not going to be ready for tri-board, but I know that the Board of Finance is, they want to look at it in totality, so they don't want to make any decisions about putting on Latimer, putting on the addition of the sixth grade until they see everything in totality. There are some Board of Finance members that are a little bit more conservative about maybe we should hold off for a little bit and see what happens, and then there's also other members that are, no, if this is the best choice, then just put it in the capital plan. So there's a little bit of discrepancy in feelings right now, but there's definitely a consensus to move in some sort of direction to start maintaining the buildings and get where we need to be. So it's kind of an answer without an answer.
Hey, no, it's better than they don't want us to go there at all. So no, I appreciate it.
Yeah, no, they're definitely not there.
That's great.
Yeah, okay. All right. So on the COVID expenditures for this evening, there's really not much to report from the last meeting, just a couple of highlights. So under the fiscal year '21, you'll see that we have about $820,000 of expenditures, and then the last time I reported, we were at about $804,000, so about a $20,000 increase. The $20,000 increase relates to about $5,000 in some additional PP&amp;E that we purchased. We closed out some technology purchases for some speakerphones and some webcams, and then the other increase was about $7,000 for tents. So we had gotten some tents for the middle school and for the high school to be used through the end of October, but with this beautiful weather that we've had, and the principals actually really love having the tents, and it's been helpful, so they requested to extend those, so we have extended those through Thanksgiving for them. So that brings us to our $822,000. Again, we have our year-end savings from last year in our CARES money, and then also our non-lapsing, so with everything, all of our funding sources taken into account, we'll have an ending balance in our non-lapsing of about $265,000.
That's great.
Questions?
Very good. Thank you, Amy.
That's great. I just wanted, let's...
Yeah, don't ask, don't ask any more questions.
That was, that's great.
I don't want the answer to change.
Yeah, to have a positive balance there, that's fantastic.
Okay. And then lastly, we all communicated around Board of Ed committees, so hopefully you get a chance to review all that, and we're all good there. And with that, we have no additional public audience unless anybody showed up in the hallway. Nope? All right. Our next meeting will be December 8. It's listed as being in the Board of Ed conference room, but stay tuned because that location could change. I would like to say thank you very much to SCTV for our new wireless mics. That's a lovely addition, now especially that we know we just have to hit the button to make them go on, so sorry for that if we delayed the start, but thank you for all your hard work as always at SCTV. Mrs. Murray, I'm glad you're going to have a new adventure at UConn, and keep the pipeline coming to Simsbury. Those future students of yours are very, very lucky. So we will miss you greatly, but we're not done.
Yeah, you're not gone yet.
With that, I will take a motion to adjourn.
Second?
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Happy Thanksgiving, everybody. See you on the other side.
Veterans Day, thank you to all the veterans.
Yes, thank you to all our veterans as well.
Hi, Jerry.